abstains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. We have some recognitions here, let's see here, who we got here? We've got Louis Towner, five years. Louis, thank you very much for your services, appreciate it.
Yay, Louis, thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
We have David Frednall, five years, David. We've got twenty-five more to go. Wanda? Wanda is the big winner today, twenty years, Wanda, thank you very much. Item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the public hearing for the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan, it's still nine AM.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to recess the commissioners' meeting and open the public hearing for the Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want me to say a few words?
Yes, say a few words.
Okay. Just a few. I just want to run through the process for everybody. The county commissioners, I should say, applied for a grant fund from the county's, I mean, from the state's municipal assistance program back in August of 2016. Carson Alfred was hired as the consultant. The first thing we did was a resident survey, a lot of you may have, well, everybody here probably received this postcard. And then after that survey was complete, we tabulated the results and started working on the update of the 2003 comprehensive plan. When it was done, we included in it such things as the Susquehanna County Housing Study and the Central Bradford Progress Authority's Marcellus Shale Economic Study. The plan was sent to municipalities, all municipalities, school districts, contiguous counties, and then the public had a review period starting in June of this year, June until August. We advertised a public meeting which was held in August? Yeah, end of August.
Yeah, I think it was end of August, yeah.
And following that, the changes that were made from the comments that were received from municipalities and from the public, we came up with the, developed the final plan, the public hearing draft that's been on the website ever since. And at the October 30th meeting of the planning commission, the planning commission recommended to the county commissioners the adoption of the plan, which is why we're here today.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public on the comprehensive plan? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to close the public hearing. All in favor? It's closed at 9:03.
There's a resolution that you'll sign at some point.
That's next.
That's next.
Oh, sorry.
Return of the commissioners' meeting, item number four.
I'll make a motion to approve item number four as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item four on the agenda, adopt Resolution 2018-18 approving the updated Susquehanna County Comprehensive Plan. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Alright, then we'll get the resolution back, you know.
Okay.
Alright, you guys are free to go if you'd like, or you can stay for the rest of the hearing.
We'll go.
Alright, item number five.
I make a motion to approve item number five on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item five, to recess commissioners' meeting and open the salary board at 9:04. All in favor?
Aye.
Salary board, item number one.
Make a motion to approve item number one, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Yes.
You didn't ask for questions.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item one on the agenda. Questions or comments? Yes.
I assume, since this was a recommendation from the sheriff, that this is in the sheriff's department.
Yes. Oh, I didn't get to the thing, but that's it. You're ahead of me here. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two.
I'll make a motion.
That's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item two, create a part-time temporary position for real estate civil criminal clerk effective November 14th, 2018 through January 31st, 2019, an hourly rate of 1214. No more than three days a week, no benefits for the recommendation of Sheriff Lance Benedict in the sheriff's department. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board? Hearing none, item three.
Make a motion to close salary board at 9:06.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to close the salary board, return the commissioners' meeting at 9:06, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you, treasure, have a good day. Item number six.
Make a motion to approve, item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item six, to ratify and approve the following cash disbursements or electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number seven.
Make a motion to approve item number seven, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item seven on the agenda, to ratify and approve the following seminar requests and repayments for seminar requests. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item number eight.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eight on the agenda, to ratify the termination of Thomas Prince, position of 911 telecommunications dispatcher effective October 26th, per the recommendation of the Director of Public Safety, 911 Coordinator Bruce Butler. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried. Nine?
Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item nine on the agenda, to ratify and accept the resignation of Matthew Oshish from the position of part-time corrections officer effective October 28th, per the Ward and Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried, item ten.
Make a motion to approve item number ten, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item ten, to ratify and approve the hiring of James Leatherhead Rule of Montrose to the open union eligible position of part-time corrections officer, per the recommendation of Ward and Mark Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried, item eleven.
Make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eleven on the agenda, to approve the hiring of Carissa Chamberlain of Susquehanna, the open part-time position of real estate civil criminal clerk, effective November 15th, 2018, per the recommendation of Sheriff Lance Benedict. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item twelve.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twelve, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item twelve, to advertise for bids for a refugee service. Questions or comments?
Could I just ask, is that an annual or a three-year contract? I don't remember.
I'm not sure, I'll have to check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item thirteen.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item thirteen, to advertise for bids for the sale of a strict brand tandem axle trailer forty-three feet long and eight foot wide. That should be as is where is. Is that okay with the two of you?
That's fine.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item fourteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fourteen, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, and this one's gonna, this also needs to be as is where is. You guys are okay with that?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to advertise for bids for a 2013 Ford E430 for the sale.
Ford 30 or Ford 50?
For the sale of a 2013 Ford E450. As is where is. Questions or comments? Basically, one of the old three buses that's all worn out for the use, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Item fifteen.
Make a motion to approve item number fifteen, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item fifteen, to adopt Resolution 2018-13 authorizing the filing for a proposal for Pennsylvania Housing Authority affordability and rehabilitation enhancement funds in the amount of $900,000 for new housing construction. And this is for, is this one of yours, Bobby Joe? For the Susquehanna County Housing Authority. You can find without adding that?
Yes.
Questions or comments? Bobby Joe, you want to at least tell us a little bit what the $900,000 is going for?
Sure, this fair funding is part of the impact fee funding that's set aside at the PHFA, Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, specifically for affordable housing projects. So we're applying for grant funding with the hopes to be able to acquire the old Hallstead School that sat vacant for several years and is beyond repair. And we would demolish and do duplex housing on the site. The first phase would include one building of housing and then hopefully next year be able to add two more duplexes on the site. And that would be for elderly over age 55.
Is there any age or any income restrictions on it? Yes, Richard, that means you.
There is a requirement that 30% of the funding help those that are below 50% of the area median income, but the other units could go up to 200% of the area median income, which is quite high. So that helps both, both levels of.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve item number sixteen and add that it is for TreeHab.
Okay, no motion?
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item sixteen, to adopt Resolution 2018-14 authorizing the filing of a proposal for Pennsylvania affordability and rehabilitation enhancement funds in the amount of $627,000. It should be for down payment assistance and rehab. Rehabilitation. Well, that's what the 627s were. Five hundred was for the rehabilitation and 127 was for the grant program.
This is down payment including cost assistance, which doesn't include that. It includes it over here.
Yeah, so basically they're sending funding from the fair fund and then they're using this document to take that and list into those. This should have been worded better from now, but it's still worse. Alright, so we have a motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to adopt Resolution 2018-14 authorizing filing for a proposal for Pennsylvania affordability and rehabilitation enhancement funds in the amount of $627,000 for down payment assistance and rehabilitation of properties. Questions or comments? This program is through TreeHab and what this is, is there is 127,000 that is earmarked for for down payment assistance and 500,000 for rehabilitation of properties. Basically, this helps low income or first-time home buyers or low income or individuals that are trying to get into houses, give them the chance to get one of the lower income houses, but get a chance to get it fixed up so they can get into it, windows, doors, or insulation or like that, so we can take some of the properties that are less likely and look horrible and gives an opportunity to improve the value of the properties around it. Any questions or comments on that? Yes, Bruce?
Is this open to anyone or just residents of Susquehanna County?
This is open to residents of Susquehanna County.
Thank you.
And it only goes to properties in Susquehanna County. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain. The reason I abstain is because I do do real estate and I don't want a conflict of interest. Seventeen?
Make a motion to approve item number seventeen, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve seventeen, adopt Resolution 2018-15 entering into a cooperative agreement with the Susquehanna County Housing Redevelopment Authority for administration of Pennsylvania housing affordability and rehabilitation enhancement programs. Questions or comments? Bobby Joe, you want to?
That just is required by PHFA that the county appoint ourselves and the next one, we were TreeHab, to administer these grants if we're funded for them. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Eighteen?
I'll make a motion to approve, item number eighteen, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eighteen, to adopt Resolution 2018-16 entering to a cooperative agreement with TreeHab for administration of Pennsylvania housing affordability rehabilitation enhancement program. Basically, the same thing that Bobby Joe just talked about except for the TreeHab. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Nineteen?
Make a motion to approve, item number nineteen, and add where it says rental assistance and utility assistance.
I'll second that with the change. Is that TreeHab or House Development?
That is TreeHab.
That's TreeHab. Alright, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item nineteen, adopt Resolution 2018-17 authorizing the filing of a proposal for Pennsylvania housing affordability rehabilitation funds, amount of $124,000 for rental assistance and utility for TreeHab. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number twenty.
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item twenty, to approve Rock Mission 2018-19, designating November 15th, 2018 as America's Recycles Day. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried, twenty-one?
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty-one, is listed on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item twenty-one on the agenda, to enter into a full plan annual maintenance agreement with Thompson &amp; Johnson Equipment on Syracuse, New York for scheduled services on two recycling-centered Toyota forklifts and one clampchuck for a total cost of $22,9650. Is that per year or what?
Yes.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried. Twenty-two?
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty-two, is this on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item twenty-two on the agenda, approve a change order in the amount of $712 for NG to LP conversion kits with the Willie Mae's lane for the maintenance building. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, item twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve, item number twenty-three, is this on the agenda?
No motion, did you second that?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to purchase virtual appliance with installation and support from Shadow Technologies for $11,846.50 to be used in support of the storage area network. Questions or comments? I'd take it you're looking at some.
I'm looking for the contract.
They're on the table.
What does it say, virtual appliance?
The virtual appliance is basically the system. It deals with storage of our, of our network information. It stores its five years. Alright, so this is basically, let's see, it's the installation of the, of the virtual and it's five years of support and engineering services. So it's for five years. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve, item number twenty-four, on the agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, second by Commissioner Warren, motion to open and award filing review of the solicitor sealed bids for the following vehicles, 2001 Dodge Durango, 2003 Saturn, 2003 Honda, 2008 Jeep, and 2012 Raptor. So this is for, in the AFD. Bid on the Jeep Liberty. For $628 to. No, they're in Shockley. Either Lenny or Penny, Penny maybe. Let's see. What else we got going on here? This is for the Ford Raptor. The Raptor, we have a bid for $7,670 to Mark Godino. Okay, we have for the Ford Raptor, we have $8,100. And that is for Donald Watkins. And then we have, let's see, anybody want a truck? Yep. Alright.
Wow.
We have a second one from Donald Watkins.
Holy moly.
Well, this one's $12,100. Donald Watkins.
For the same vehicle?
For the same vehicle.
It doesn't say what vehicle.
I can't imagine paying anything like that for any of the other ones. Ford Raptor again. Now, this one's from Brenda Pruitt, $3750. This is for the Dodge Durango, probably got a bid on that, that's good. Got $101 on that. That's Alan Cybers. And we got Saturn Eye on now. That's $127. And that is, uh, Alan Cybers. And then we have Raptor. Raptor is $3577 and that's Alan Cybers. Then we got the Hyundai. Well, let's see. That's Alan Cybers again at $111. And then this one was for the 2008 Jeep. That's $477. And that's Alan Cybers. Alright. So. Like a, we don't, this, I'd like to get a motion to award the 2012 Ford Raptor to Donald Watkins for $12,100.
So moved.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to award the Raptor to Donald Watkins at a price of $12,100. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carries. The Jeep. We have a bid from, it looks like Penny. Shadakey. That's for $628. A motion to.
So moved. I'll second that. Which one was that?
That's the 2008 Jeep, motion by Marion, second by, uh, Okay, a motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to let the Jeep go for $628 to Penny Shadakey. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the other ones, the Dodge Durango, the, the, um, Saturn and the Hyundai. I'd like a motion to reject the bids because they're too low, I can get more out of them for scrap than I can for that.
So moved. I'll second that.
A motion to reject the bids on the Saturn, the Dodge, and the Hyundai. A motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Like a motion to take those three vehicles and sell them for scrap to the local scrapyard?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, no motion, and a second. To move these vehicles and sell them to the scrapyard. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, back to our agenda. The Thompson &amp; Johnson one.
Do you want to withdraw it or recess the meeting and look at it? Because this number is not here anywhere. Because this number is not here anywhere. And it doesn't add up to.
Let's see, what number was that?
Twenty-two ninety-six fifty.
Twenty-six fifty. No, one time.
I guess I'm looking for the total somewhere.
Well, six ninety-four fifty times three is what?
Little over twenty thousand.
Six hundred and forty-four times three.
Fifty times three.
Yeah, doesn't make any sense. Alright, we need to go back to, uh, item twenty-one. Uh, let's, uh, give me a motion to, uh, withdraw the motion.
I'll make a motion to withdraw my motion on twenty-one. I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to withdraw the motion on twenty-one. Reason for that is the bill I'm looking at doesn't agree with what is on the agenda for some reason. So that'll have to get investigated. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so that is denied at this point. Alright, any public comment on the commissioners' meeting? Yeah, Scoop?
Was there a, I heard that there was an emergency or a special election board meeting called the day of the election.
Yes, there was. Yes, there was. Yes, it was over the issue of, um, uh, there was stickers being, uh, it was reported they were being handed out at one of the polling places that says I voted. And there was people that seemed to have an issue with that. So we got clarification, believe it or not. Uh, we called the Department of State and after they laughed at us and said, you know, what are you crazy? Uh, yes, you can give out stickers that say I voted. All the other counties in the state are doing it, why aren't we? So, um, that was the extent of it. So we let the people know that, yes, we could, they could give out the stickers or they could be laying on the table and be available for people.
I figured it out.
Figured it out?
Alright. Actually, I mean, that is honestly what I saw on social media on election day were people who were very sad about not having stickers. And I have never seen that before in any other election.
Well, moving forward, we'll have to look at that.
I also saw a news report from, you know, a national news report on one, one county who was not going to spend money on purchasing stickers any longer, so.
Well, we did not purchase the stickers. There were stickers that the precinct had. I don't know where they got them, how long they've had them, but they had them and, uh, and, uh, we're handing them out, so.
Alright.
Alright? Any other questions or comments? Will?
Just curious, something other than the commissioners' meeting. Any fantasies from, uh, PANDO since Thursday night?
Oh, well, there's been a lot of communications. Um, and we just got an update and we've got to get that out to everybody. They've got, there's eight crews in from outside this county now. And, um, they're still working overtime on Saturdays, trying to get as many roads fixed as they can. And we'll keep at it as long as they can. So, uh, they are getting some of the work done. They've got a long way to go yet. There's, uh, as I said before, ten million dollars worth of damage in this county alone, so. So they're trying to concentrate on the bigger roads first and then, of course, they've got to get to the four-digit roads and get those done too. Anything else? Hearing nothing? Can I get a motion adjourned? Alright, let's go back to this twenty-one.
Now I, now I have found the email also right here. So if you look at it, it's every hundred and twenty days, so it's times three for the whole year is eight hundred and one plus eight hundred and one plus six ninety-four fifty is twenty-two ninety-six fifty. So I'd like to make a motion again, um, to approve. Item number twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-two ninety-six, so it was correct then? All along it was correct.
Well, it was correct, but it doesn't say that in the contract though.
Okay, and that's per year?
Annual.
Okay, per year to maintain. These are the two new forklifts that we just purchased.
Plus the one that clamp truck is there, so there's three vehicles.
Alright.
So we have a motion again to approve.
I will second that.
I'll second. Any other questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried.
Nice looking forklift, by the way. It's all in closing glass, so they don't have the wind beating on them now.
Alright, hearing nothing else, I get a motion adjourned.
So move.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold to adjourn at nine thirty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so carried.